All right, we're going to call the meeting to order. It's Tuesday, October 21st, 2025, 3:00 P. M. We'll have our invocation by Councilwoman Deborah Ross, pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Creighton Cochran.
And let us pray. Oh Father in heaven, we thank you for this opportunity that you've given us again, Lord, to stand up and be citizens of Bossier City, to be able to speak positive things, to bring good works to the city of Bossier. Oh Father, we just thank you, Lord, for the opportunity, Lord, that you've given us all, Lord. We pray that the decisions that be made here today be for the best for the citizens of Bossier City, Lord. Oh Father in heaven, we love you, we need you, and we can't get along without you, Lord. Father, we just pray for peace, harmony, and love among all men, women, boys, and girls, Lord. Oh Father in heaven, we just pray that you just keep us all if you would, Lord. Father, I pray that you bless every citizen, every employee, Father, of this great city, Lord. Just please, just be with us all, Father, and guide us all. And again, Lord, I just pray that you bless us to make the best decisions for the city of Bossier. And we're grateful for the opportunity to serve the citizens of Bossier City. Oh Father, all these blessings, we act in your darling son, Jesus Christ's name, we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the saying of our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Chris Smith?
Here.
Mr. Cochran?
Here.
Mr. Hammond?
Here.
Mrs. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Cliff Smith?
Here.
Mr. Gerard? Absent. Mr. Maggio?
Here.
Council, in accordance with Louisiana Open Meetings laws and the adopted Bossier City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the City Council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda items may approach and state their names and address for the record, and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. All other audience members are asked to observe the meeting quietly. If a board member has a conflict of interest on any of the items included on this agenda, please disclose that now.
All right, Council, I need a motion to approve today's agenda.
So much.
Sorry. I think there's a motion by Councilman Cochran and a second by Councilman Maggio. Is there any public comment?
Cody McKeller, 2217 Hickory Ridge Drive. I'm here today just to speak about the budget. We at Red Rover are a law-abiding business, and yet here we are again in the same position as before, simply trying to find a resolution to a dispute where we've been caught in the crosshairs of Bossier City's illegal conduct. We have placed a fair offer on the table. Unfortunately, the city attorneys refused to have a serious discussion about settling this issue. In fact, we were told that there weren't enough members of the council to vote to settle this litigation. We don't believe that this is true. We don't know if the city attorney speaks for you, but we hope not. To be clear, we would like to engage in serious settlement negotiations. We believe that this is in the best interest of all parties. I have eight copies of our last settlement offer, if each of you would like to see it. Also have one for you, Mr. Mayor. I implore you to study our offer. When we first filed our lawsuit, we were told from the beginning by the city attorneys that they would litigate to punish us. They said specifically, "We want to settle, but the city has 60 million they inherited for things like this, and they don't want to make the fraternity mad, so we can just fight it out in court." This litigation strategy will cause the city to rack up attorney's fees to be paid for with taxpayer dollars. For what purpose? To punish me? I hope not. I'm fully prepared to fight this case if necessary. Does this litigation strategy actually facilitate the best interest of the citizens of Bossier City? I think not. I think if you studied our settlement offer, you would agree with me that meaningful settlement discussions would be beneficial. We're committed to litigation if necessary, but shouldn't, or but... Shouldn't we be given the minimum respect of engaging in meaningful settlement discussions? I'm a Bossier City native and have lived here 38 years of my life. This hasn't been easy for us. For goodness sakes, the wife of someone named in my suit cut my hair for many years and still cuts my dad's hair to this day. Red Rover can service up to 5,000 customers in a month. We built a stellar reputation despite the illegal conduct we've suffered. I personally have a ticket that's being hung over my head that the city hopes one day they can prosecute so a permit could be pulled. This conduct is not how the city of Bossier should operate. The city of Bossier is punishing and preventing a business from operating in the capacity they were intended. The same names keep coming up each and every time there's an issue. How much longer will they be allowed to run roughshod over Bossier City? I respectfully request you review our settlement offer, and you engage in discussion, authorize, and compel Bossier City engage in these meaningful settlement discussions.
Mr. McKeller, I also need you to sign in, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Then you can give that to the clerk and she'll disseminate it.
David Crockett, 653 Dumaine Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. I wasn't even going to speak today, but I'm glad these guys came up. Bossier City's moving in the right direction, but this is a blemish on this city. It was atrocious what happened to this business. If you haven't watched the Bossier Watch program on this, and I hope they put this forward again, but the evidence looks like maybe a councilman or somebody put pressure on the police to issue a citation for this group, and he may not be able to talk about that. This is an embarrassment and a stain for the city. And I've walked every street in the city, and I know many of you people here would like to have this settled. I don't know what's keeping this from happening.
Mr. Crockett, can you step back from the mic just a little?
Yeah, okay. But you really need to move past this, and you can't fix the wrongs with this. I think they're going to win this absolutely, and it's going to cost the city more money by doing this than actually trying to settle it, because you're going to have to pay anyway. You are living with the poor actions of former councilmen, and you need to move past it. There are some other blemishes, and I think for the mayor, you need to lead and not follow on this, because the courts will make you follow. I don't know if your attorneys are giving you bad advice, but how many times has this council gotten bad advice from two attorneys? So I'm passionate about this. And I wasn't going to say anything. I love this council. I love where you're going. I don't love everything that's happened over the last four years, and I think we need to move past it. I hope somebody pushes this forward. They've given you every opportunity. This is a stain and a blemish. Watch the recording, people in Bossier City, and vote out anybody who does not want to support the fact that these guys were abused by the city. I think we need to move forward. We need to sign this?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
But thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Is there any other public comment? Any comment from the council?
I love this council, though.
Thank you, Mr. Crockett. All right, Council, we're all, we're still voting by voice and electronically, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries.
All right, Council, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the October 7th, 2025 regular council meeting and dispense with the reading.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Ross, a second by Councilman Cliff Smith. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? Council, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries.
Public hearings and actions on unfinished business?
Adopt an ordinance to appropriate $100,000 from the Hotel Motel Tax Fund for professional marketing services. Final reading?
So move. Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Hammond, a second by Councilman Cliff Smith. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? All right, Council, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Mr. Maggio, did yours pop up?
No, it didn't pop up.
Are you a yea?
Yeah. I'm a yea, babe.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to declare certain miscellaneous furniture and fixture items owned by the city of Bossier City as surplus to the city's need and provide for disposal according to law. Final reading?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Hammond, a second by Councilwoman Ross. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? All right, Council, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute the attached cooperative endeavor agreements between the city of Bossier City and the Louisiana Department of Treasury and State of Louisiana. Final reading?
So move. Second.
A motion by Councilman Hammond, a second by Councilman Maggio. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? Council, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance authorizing the transfer of $13,362,739.69 from the 2018 LCDA bond fund to various capital funds, and the transfer of existing projects from the 2018 LCDA bond fund. Final reading?
So move. Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Hammond, a second by Councilman Cliff Smith. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? Council, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance amending ordinance 81 of 2025 declaring the existence of a local emergency due to the big airline lift station pump and manhole repair, wet well cleaning, and investigation of influence sewer main under state highway for a total cost of $213,649.23. Final reading?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Ross, a second by Councilman Maggio. Is there any public comment? Or Councilman Cochran? Who seconded it? Yeah, that's what I thought. Mrs. McGraw looked at me like I was crazy.
I thought it was Mr. Cliff Smith that had seconded it.
Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? All right, Council, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance amending the 2025 Streets and Drainage Fund budget by $300,000 to increase expenditures for unplanned streets and drainage projects. Final reading?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Hammond, a second by Councilwoman Ross. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? All right, Council, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance appropriating $600,000 from the Equipment Replacement Fund to purchase replacements for CEG-only vehicles. Final reading?
So move. Second.
Motion by Councilman Hammond and a second by Councilman Cochran. Is there... He said it first. Is there any public comment?
I thought maybe he was using silence.
He was very quiet.
Any comment from the council? All right, Council, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
We might be having an internet issue because everybody just got kicked off. Motion carried. It's not going to show up on the screen because it's showing everybody's kicked off the system, but motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to amend the 2025 Water Operating, Sewer Operating, and Water Capital Budgets. Final reading?
So move.
Second. Got a motion by Councilman Hammond, a second by Councilman Maggio. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? All right, Council, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to adopt additions to Chapter 2 Administration in the City of Bossier City Code of Ordinances. Final reading?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Hammond, a second by Councilwoman Ross. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? Council, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries. New business, introduce an ordinance to authorize the installation of all-way stop control at the intersections of Barbary Lane and Pampas Drive, and at Anita Street and Impala Drive in the city of Bossier City. First reading?
So move.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Hammond, a second by Councilwoman Ross. Is there any public comment? Mr. Andy, how are you, sir?
Good, how are you?
Doing well.
Good afternoon, Councilman.
Hello.
I'd like to request that we hold off on this ordinance until engineering can finish their intersection study. And we're about two weeks out from there, so hoping to have it done by the next meeting.
Okay. Councilman Hammond, Councilwoman Ross, y'all sponsored this and made the motion and seconded, do y'all?
Well, I guess, what kind of study is Engineering Department doing?
In order to put up new stop signs, things like the amount of vehicles going through that intersection, site distances, crash data, all that has to be looked at.
Well, the problem I have with that, I understand that y'all have to do all of that, but you're going to come back with the study and tell me that 1,000 cars an hour did not come through an intersection. There are 1,000 cars an hour not going to come through that intersection. It's a subdivision. People leave and go to work.
Not all that criteria has to be met, is...
Well, I'm just speaking from, I've been through this song and dance for four years on stop signs. You know, the only reason that we bring stop signs up is because they are requested by the citizens that elect us that live in these subdivisions.
Yes, sir.
And that is the whole reason that we do that. While I respect, I respect y'all's opinion, but I don't think that all the studies and everything like that need to go into putting a simple stop sign up in a subdivision.
Okay. The FHA disagrees with that.
What's that?
Federal Highway Administration, they disagree with that.
They, in a subdivision?
It's all stop signs.
Have we had to do these studies in the past?
Yeah, I mean...
We just put, we just voted...
We just voted to put stop signs up the other day. All this wasn't, I know where this is all coming from, but I'm not going to get into that, but I can if y'all want me to. All because we went over somebody's head. Now, all of a sudden, that, all of these studies and everything like that. So I'm going to vote, I'm not going to delay this for two weeks. It's going to move forward today.
From the engineering standpoint, I'm trying to do the best I can to help out the city and make sure we do things correctly. Just want that to be voiced.
I don't know where the Federal Highway Authority comes into it in a subdivision that is one not on a state road or a federal road. All the subdivisions that I've developed over the past 22 years, this is the first I've ever heard of this, of the FHA coming involved in this.
I can forward you some documentation if you'd like.
They can find us, I guess, if they want to.
This requires two, this requires two readings, so it won't be adopted for two weeks. Do you think you could have the study ready for the next council meeting?
Certainly try.
Okay, well, let's, if Councilman Hammond and Ms. Ross aren't going to pull their motion and second, then this is going to go for a vote, so I would just suggest that we have that ready for the second reading.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Any comment from, any additional comments from the council? All right, Council, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to declare certain miscellaneous furniture... Introduce an ordinance to amend Section 14-33 of the Bossier City Code of Ordinances relative to raising upholstery. First reading?
So move. Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Hammond, a second by Councilman Cliff Smith. Is there any public comment?
Can I ask that anybody that comes up to comment, please print your name and address, as well as state it?
Hi, I'm... Much love?
No, you're fine.
Brenda Davis. I've spoke to many of you on the city council about this. I had chickens in my backyard.
Can you, we need your full name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Brenda Davis, 1223 Evangeline Circle. I had chickens, and then someone reported me, so I had to take, get rid of all of them. And that's fine, but I just feel like we should revisit this. I mean, there's a lot of health benefits to having chickens. And after COVID, we saw how many people need to be a little bit more self-reliant with themselves in providing themselves eggs and vegetables and everything else in their backyards. So I think it's just real important that we try to encourage that in the city, for people to be more self-sufficient. And I know that what we've proposed is that they have to be contained in a coop. You can only have so many of them. They're not allowed to be running free. And I've got a list that I can pass out to all of you of all the cities in the state of Louisiana that allow backyard chickens. Baton Rouge, Homa, Kenner, Lafayette, Lake Charles, Metairie, New Orleans, Prairieville, Shreveport, West Monroe. All these major cities allow backyard chickens. So I'm just curious, what do they know that we don't, or what do you know that they don't? You know, and so I'd just like to propose that you at least give us the opportunity, I know this is the first vote, to at least give us two weeks to get more information and for y'all to acquire your information, and come back in two weeks and give us a chance to have a vote on this.
Well, that is, that's what we're doing here today. I'm, you know, I did this ordinance to repeal the ban on chickens.
Okay.
This is allowing you to have chickens.
Right.
This, yes, ma'am. And I think I was the first one that spoke to you
Right.
on the phone the other day. And, you know, I drove by your residence and looked and everything, and I mean, it's perfectly fine. All of us would be kidding ourselves if we said there's not already chickens there in the city, because they are. And I think that is, you know, that's one of the reasons that, you know, I just felt best that we go ahead and repeal that ordinance that went into place and let people have them with certain guidelines.
Right, and I just think that people should also realize that a lot of these studies that have been done on this, when you vote against them, it's really against people of middle and lower income. You know, this is, some people are saying this is a classist issue, that you're doing this against people that are middle to lower income. So I think that's something to consider for people within the city also. But I'd like to hand you all this.
If you have to.
Okay, and there's a chickenlaws.com. You can go there. It's on this site, on this page I've got for you, and it tells you every city in Louisiana, what their laws are and the requirements for it. So it gives you a little bit more information.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? On chickens? Any comment from the council? Additional comment?
Present.
Yes, sir.
We did this about three years ago, and I went to sites, assuming green acres. Like, I ain't saying they won't keep it clean, but some people don't keep it clean.
Exactly.
You know, and it was really a mess, the yard smelled, I mean, no grass in the backyard. It was really bad. You figure two people, three might keep it excellent. The other ones ain't going to keep it clean, you know. Where we go from there, it's in a neighborhood. If you're outside the city, be different, but inside a neighborhood, you know, your yard's 200 by 100, 150 foot deep. That smell there, you know? And that's why I couldn't vote for it. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Maggio. Is there any other comment? Mr. Smith?
Today...
Okay, give me, let, just sit down for a sec.
Let him come on, and then...
Make sure you state your name and address for the record and print it on the piece of paper.
Robert Davis, 1223 Evangeline Circle. The, uh... About the smell, I mean, at my daughter's house, the neighbor has so many cats that you can smell the cats. I mean, we allow cats, dogs in the city, and we put up with the smell from them. I, you know, I disagree that if you keep it clean, you do it right, it's all can be done. If somebody complains about it, the city could send somebody out to check it. You know, it's, uh... There ought to be a way to do it.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment?
Crockett, 653 Domain Drive, Bossier City. I'm already on here. Read the ordinance. It says in there, if the smell gets out of control, you gotta keep it within there, so I hope you read it. If you read what it says, the gentleman's right. This is for the people. I think, you know, you can't keep fighting the people. I don't, it doesn't sound like what you just said, that you read what it says in there, because you can call the city and have them respond to it. I really support what these guys are doing. Don't fight the people. Quit doing that. I think there are a couple of examples of that here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crockett. Is there any other public comment? Last chance on the public comment for chickens. All right, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, um, I talked to Mr. Davis the other day, and like I told him that day, I don't have a problem if somebody wants to have chickens in their yards. But I also told him that when I was elected back in March, that I was elected to represent everybody in District Three. So today, I'm a yes, but if anyone is opposed to it, if you are in favor of it, that gives you two weeks to reach out to us and state your opinions on this. There were some valid points made. If we vote no, then we're voting against letting people have chickens, but then again, what about those people who don't want neighbors with chickens? We need to give them the same opportunity to be represented. So with that said, I'm a yes today. I will be a yes today. But I encourage our citizens to reach out to each one of your councilmen and state your opinion. We are here to represent you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other comment from the council? Mr. Cochran?
Thank you, Chairman Smith. I also spoke to you, Ms. Davis, today, and I promised you that I wouldn't be the breaking vote for this not to be heard by other citizens. I also told you that I've only heard from four or five people as of today about the chickens is the conversation you and I had, which unfortunately is about four or five more phone calls than I received about the budget that we're about to do today. So if that tells you anything, Bossier City, tells me something. I promise you I wasn't gonna be the vote to, to kill it today, and I'm under the impression that it may end up being a 3-3 vote, so today I'm gonna vote yes for it. But I, but like I told you, you're a four to one odd right now. I've had four people to your one tell me they didn't want it, and different reasons. I shared with you, I had a lady that runs in the neighborhood, already been attacked by a coyote before. We live real close to the river. Coyotes do come from the river to our neighborhood. Then I had a man who lives next door to chickens already. We didn't give up his address, nor would I if I knew where he lived. So he was, he was not impressed with the way the yard looked on the other side of the fence, and I can understand that, too. I'm not gonna be the vote to kill it today. I do believe that we should be able to hear for the next two weeks from the citizens. I encourage you. I got four votes saying no. I got one saying yes, Ms. Davis. I'm not gonna kill it today. Please reach out to us. That's my, that's my take right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Councilman Hammond?
What?
You raised your hand a second ago, did you?
No, I was pointing.
Oh, you were pointing at Creighton, okay.
You want me to talk?
No, 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 not if I don't have to. Any, any other comments?
Mrs. Ross.
I would like to say something.
Yes, Ms. Ross.
President, Chris. I really wouldn't have a problem with the citizens having the chickens in their backyard, but you said that you can just call and have someone to come out and monitor your neighbor with the chicken. So you would be pulling property standards or either the police away from something that I think would be a little bit more important than monitoring homes with chickens in the backyard. My husband wants chickens so bad in the backyard, but I know he ain't gonna do a good job of keeping them chicken coops clean. So I told him today that I was gonna vote no, because I know he's not gonna do a good job. You all might do an outstanding job of keeping your area clean where your chickens at. But that doesn't mean everybody to say, hey, I'm gonna get me four chickens, put them in a coop, and take care of the coop. And how do we know that you're not gonna raise chickens and try to make a profit off of them, or your chicken lay eggs and make a profit off of it? I'm just saying, people do all type of things, Mr. Crockett, to make money off of items, so that's, that's my spiel on that. That we would be pulling, I think, our property standards and our police officers to check on chicken or get phone calls, the chicken making up too much noise, or chicken that got loose and run around. So that's my take on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ross. All right.
I do need to speak now, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
So...
Voted a second ago.
Do what? Do what?
I said we should have voted a second ago.
Should have been quicker on your feet. First of all, I mean, just a couple of statements that are being made. The employees that work for the City of Bossier, it's their job to serve all citizens, no matter what. Whether it's coming out for a chicken complaint, if it's coming out for a cat, a dog, Police Department, Animal Control, and Property Standards, they answer those calls all day long, all hours of the night. So that should not come into play. That is what they are paid to do, is to serve the citizens of Bossier City. Whether or not they make a profit off of it, if they wanna start a small business selling fresh eggs at a market or whatever, that is, that is their right to do that, if they wanna make money off of, off of their chickens. So, you know, the reason this whole ordinance came to play three years ago is off of one address in North Bossier that they had 20 to 30 chickens in the backyard and inside the house. That is where, that is where this came, came to play. Other people that have them, I've seen them firsthand. The backyards are completely clean, the coops are clean, everything like that. It wasn't too long ago that most of us here, we could not go to the grocery store and afford a dozen eggs along with everything else. So with somebody wanting to have chickens or plant a garden or something like that, and I have to agree with him, somebody that has a house full of cats or dogs that they do not keep up smells a whole lot worse than chickens do. So we need to look at this guy, I mean, you have to look at this in a sense that you're telling people free in the United States of America that they cannot have fresh eggs? I mean, that's what this all pulls down to. I mean, there's so much more stuff that we could sit up here and go back and forth over, but it is chickens and eggs. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hammond. Any other comment? All right, council, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstaining?
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance authorizing the sale of property identified as assessment number 148723 to Delta Airline Drive LLC for $295,000 pursuant to Louisiana Revised Statute 33:4712. First reading.
I'd like to make a motion that we continue this and remove the Delta Airline Drive and open this up for a public bid.
So Councilman Cliff Smith's making a motion that we delay this for two weeks. Is there any, does he have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Ross. All right, so the motion on the table is to delay this for two weeks, and what was the second part of that?
To remove the Delta Airline Drive LLC and open it up for public bid or auction.
Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council?
Yes, Mr. President. What are, what are we hoping to accomplish in two weeks?
The way it's worded to me right now, it seems like we've already got a deal cut and just waiting on our signature to sell this piece of property to Delta Airline Drive, whoever they are. And I think it may be in our best interest that if we put this up, it's already been appraised at $295,000. If we put it up for a public bid, maybe there's a chance that we can recoup more money than that.
You can't recoup more money than by appraisal value on public property, property held by the city entity. Somebody can't come in and offer $700,000 for a piece of property, just like we cannot sell it for more than appraised value. You might wanna check the laws on that.
Mr. Jacobs?
Again, I'm not aware of anything that would prevent a buyer from purchasing city property for more than appraised value, but again, I mean...
Why would you want to?
That's, that's, that's not a, that's a common sense question. I agree with that, but again, but I was not prepared for that question, but I'll certainly take a look at it. Sitting here today, I'm not aware of anything that would allow the city or would allow a buyer to buy. Certainly that for, you know, less than appraised value, you can take certain factors into account for economic development and things of those nature, but typically the law is you can't sell for less than appraised value. I am not aware of anything that would prevent the city from selling for more than appraised value, but again, that's not a definitive answer.
Yeah, I may be wrong on that. I will go, I will go review that, too.
I might be wrong, too, Mr. Hammond. I just wasn't, you know, again, I wasn't, nobody asked me to look at that. I'll be happy to look at it in the next two weeks and if requested to do so, and I'll give you an answer.
Okay. Is there any other, Mr. Cochran?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. Do we have a map or a highlighted area where this is? I know you have Mr. Pool's office and you have Green Acres Middle School.
You remember where the swimming pool used to be at Green Acres?
I did.
That's the property.
Is the brown, the building part of that property? Because the building is still there.
Is the, no.
I'm looking at the fact sheets here. So it would be the property in front of the building? I went by there today. I'm just trying to imagine where we're at here.
Yeah, I don't even know what the address is.
It's not, the appraisal's not attached to the agenda.
Okay, I apologize, but it is just that tract of land, I think it's about a third of an acre, that is right in, in front of that building, so just between the office building and the school driveway.
Got you. Okay. That's all I need, Mr. President. Thank you. Is there any other comment from the council?
Well, yeah, I mean, my question still has not been answered. What are we trying to accomplish in two weeks?
His motion is to delay it for two weeks and, I guess, allow it from not being sold to Delta Airline Drive LLC and advertise that it's for sale and see if there are any other bidders on the property, understanding his...
Correct. I mean, how did we come to this point with Delta, whoever they are? Did they approach us to buy this piece of property? Did we put it out as, hey, we got this property for sale?
They approached the city. It would be for a commercial establishment. And so in my time here, that's the first time anyone's ever approached to purchase that property. We did our due diligence to ensure we had clear title and all of that, and then got the appraisal. And so this is, it's similar, I would say, to kind of the chasing aces deal where they had a concept, the city had the property, and so we entered into an agreement for that as well, without doing a public bid. But it does have, it actually will lay over, it has a longer period because it does have to be publicly advertised, and so it won't be back on the agenda for the final reading until November 18th.
So it'll be once a week for three weeks, I believe, pursuant to the statute that we're using to sell the property.
So if XYZ Company sees it advertised, they could still come in and put a bid on it?
Absolutely. That's, that's the entire intent of the advertising period.
By listing this name of this corporation on here, that's kind of just, to me, it didn't seem a lot of transparency in that, like maybe there was some kind of backroom deal?
Absolutely not. They...
Well, I understand that, but if I were sitting out there looking in here at this, I might would have a question about that.
I mean, I can say with them, if they had not approached, we would not have ordered an appraisal, you know, and taken any of those steps. So, you know, it's, I don't really know. I understand where you're coming from, but that was the only way we got to this point was through their, their approach and desire to purchase it.
Do we, do we have a list of all city property that we're willing to sell listed somewhere, that if any business were to, like...
I'm just assuming Delta Airline Drive just saw this lot pulled up on the Tax Assessor's website, noticed the City of Bossier, so they came to the city, but...
Exactly, yes. We, we have a list of property. I don't know that we have kind of sorted through to determine what we would, what we'd be, would be willing to sell, but I mean, we are always open, you know, just like this entity came to us with their plans and we're, you know, trying to move forward with it. So, yeah, I don't, we don't have a set list, but there's definitely city-owned property that any citizen is welcome to approach and we'll go down that road with them.
Okay, thank you.
And can I say something? That is the appraised value that they're selling it at, right?
Correct.
And by law, we have to sell it at appraised value?
At appraised value.
No backroom, no backroom deals, right?
Nothing, nothing less, correct.
But you could sell it for more if somebody else wanted it.
I would defer to legal on that.
No, 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 no. I never, I did not mean to imply that there was a backroom deal. That's not, from what I, from what I know of this council and this administration, I would never accuse you of that. But there's somebody somewhere watching this show right now who are gonna say, oh, well, look at, look at Bossier again. And I just wanna make sure there's no signs of impropriety whatsoever going on. I would be more than happy to pull my motion to continue, and we can let this go through and go on to the, whatever my word is I just lost, where it's published for three weeks, and maybe somebody else will come up and offer more.
And we welcome anyone. If there's property that they know the city holds and...
Yeah, because the last thing I want anybody to think is that I'm anti-business. Let's sell everything and put businesses there.
I agree.
Mr. Cochran?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My, I guess the only concern I would have moving forward is, is to get in a situation kind of like we were a couple of weeks ago. The people that approached us to purchase said property, have they done their due diligence and asked about a curb cut right inside of a school?
They have been advised that all we can do is sell the property, that there are other governing bodies that would, they would have to get approvals from, for zoning and for access. So they are, that's in the works.
Is it zoned for business right now?
It's actually zoned residential agriculture. It's RA right now. And so I've put them in touch with MPC, and so I'm assuming the, you know, the... And so I've put them in touch with MPC, and so I'm assuming the, you know, the property right next door with Mr. Poole's office is,
doesn't include the building.
Is zoned for business, I'm not sure exactly which classification.
Mr. Cochran, I, I had that same exact question, and I, I talked to Carlotta, and Andy can probably shed light on this too by working at the DOTD, that Carlotta explained there was some law that they would have to permit them one curb cut coming onto Airline Drive, not two, but one, that they would have to work within those parameters, because I, I asked her the same question, and we fixed to get into something that we got into before, and Carlotta said that they would have to allow them one curb cut.
Well, how is that, because they won't allow us a curb cut at a strip center on Benton Road.
Well, I'm-
We have no shared access with the next door neighbors, so.
I'm glad to know, Andy, that he left the DOTD and came to work here, and they're mad at us, so.
I mean, if, look, if DOTD's promising curb cuts, I'm full for it, and I have a building that needs one.
They're not giving us one because they took those curb cuts away. They won't give them back once they take them away.
But it doesn't make, anyways, we're not going to get to that debate, but it doesn't make sense.
That's a different day.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, but we, we have made no guarantees of the property.
Well, I just don't want to find ourselves in a situation where people have invested quarter, one and a quarter million dollars into something with, with the hopes and dreams and aspirations of doing something, then we have to look at it logistically-
Right.
And be the bad guys again. That's, just wanting to stay away from that.
Yes, absolutely, and this would authorize the city to sell the property, but not bind us to sell it. So if, if they were to back out, or if, you know, anything were to come up, we are not obligated. And this is, it's permissive.
Yeah, okay.
And honestly, Mr. Cochran, I thought the school board owned the property. I, I had no idea that the city did, because that's where the swimming pool and everything used to be way back in the day, and I had no idea that the city owned that property.
And I knew the building was being used for storage.
Yeah.
All right, council, is there anything else? Ms. Rogers, we, yes, sir, yes, ma'am, and for everybody, just real quick, just to try to keep order, like, public comment at the beginning, then council comment.
You guys said a whole bunch of stuff that raised more questions, or else I wouldn't have even gotten up here at all, but thank you for the time. Cassie Rogers, Bozier City, Louisiana, 71112. Ms. Nottingham, do you know what they're gonna, you said commercial, but do, what does that mean? What are their plans, what are they going to put there?
Retail, but I can't disclose that.
Okay.
They will go through the, they will have to go through MPC, through all of the-
Well, I hope there's some serious stipulations there. I would say that Green Acres Middle School is probably one of the most schools that has walkers. There's probably very, very few buses, and I would venture to say that if a liquor store goes right there, because we don't decline liquor license in Bossier City, there's going to be a huge, huge problem.
They, there's, yeah, there, you have to be 350 feet.
That might be 352 feet, and you have all those children walking by that liquor store every day. I just wanted to put that in your brain as well, guys, that's it.
Thank you. All right, any other comments? All right, so the motion on the table is to delay this for two weeks, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
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 I'm, I'm, I told you I would withdraw my motion to continue.
All right, so that fails, so now I need a motion for this agenda item.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Maggio, is there any public comment, again? Any comment from the council? All right, all those in favor.
If I may, Mr. Smith, Mr. President, if in fact during the advertisement period, before the ordinance goes into effect, the council is approached by a competing purchaser, then the council is always, you know, has the discretion not to pass it at the second reading, and the ordinance would not go into effect, then you could always redo the ordinance with a different amount, as long as it's appraised value or higher, and, and proceed from there.
Okay. And then just, we, the-
I didn't think that's what we voted on.
The last vote, Ms. McGraw is showing that there are five, four, and one, it was one, four, that would be me, and then everybody else was against.
Continuing.
That's the continue.
Yeah, that was the continuing. All right, so now we're voting on the actual agenda item, so, council, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. Any abstain?
Motion carries. And it won't come back up until November 18th. Introduce an ordinance to amend sections 114-4 and 114-32 of the Code of Ordnances of Bossier City, Louisiana, to adjust water and deposit rates in public utilities, first reading.
So move.
Motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Cliff Smith. Before we do public comment, Ms. Williamson, Ms. Marissa, because I know there's about to be public comment, so go ahead and get, get ahead of it.
Marissa Love's coming to our council.
She does, welcome back.
She came back from vacation early just to be here today.
I did, I heard that we're meeting and I just had to come.
I, I feel you, Marissa, I totally feel you.
So if y'all just want to give us a briefing on what this is for the public?
Okay, so this is nothing to do with any kind of residential or commercial accounts. This is not anything to do with stationary meters at people's homes. This is strictly pertaining to the filling station. This is where contractors who are building or who are doing contracting in Bossier City will come and fill up their trucks. They use this for projects throughout the city. It clocks it on an access panel, and it tells us what they use. I manually personally bill that every single month, and so this is just changing from $13.77 per thousand gallons to $14 per thousand gallons. And then also, this is for the fire hydrant meters, these are mobile meters. These require a special permit, it does go through permits and inspections, that is taken care of by Rodney Taylor. He makes sure that they have their contracting license, they acquire a special permit just to use the meter itself. And right now, they give us a $1,000 deposit right here in water billing, and then they're billed a flat rate per month of $300 just to hold the meter, and then it is $6 per thousand gallons of usage to use this meter. And I guess the benefit of it would be they have a mobile meter, they can take it and hook it to any fire hydrant in the city. It's got backflow prevention built into it, it prevents cross-contamination. They're contractors who are specially licensed to be able to use it, and for huge projects where you're watering in, like for foundational purposes and things like that.
I've, I've got one.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's an expensive meter.
Yes, yes, but it is, it's worth it if you're doing those large projects and things like that.
So nothing is changing at, down off of Tinsley, go down there, punch in your code, fill up your water truck, everything like that. The only thing that is changing is what it is per thousand, and the deposit on the meter.
Right, that's, that's going up by, for just the Tinsley Boulevard Filling Station, that's going up by 23 cents per thousand gallons. That's the only change to filling stations. Now, for the fire hydrant meter, it's changing in two ways. Number one, the deposit is going to go up to 3,000, that's because the price of the meter has gone up, it's more than doubled. It's 25, it's over $2,500 to replace one right now, and we just had to buy five. If they are lost, if the backflow prevention and bleed ports are damaged, you have to replace the whole entire thing, and we're at a loss of over 1,500 every time we do that. And then, of course, the per thousand gallons, that did not go up whenever we did our rate change for residential and commercial accounts, and so we're changing it, or we would propose to change it, from $6 to $10 per thousand gallons of water. It's been 15 years since that rate has changed.
I'm sorry?
It's been 15 years since that rate has changed.
Do y'all have any questions for Ms. Williamson? Ms. Marissa, no? As usual, you just explained everything so well, they don't have any questions.
All right, well, I did my best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there any public comment? Any other comments from the council? Counsel, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to declare certain improvements to immovable property owned by the city of Bossier City as surplus to the city's needs and provide for a disposal according to law, first reading.
So move.
Said.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Ross, a second by Councilman Maggio, is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? Counsel, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to approve report of change order one for the lateral B1 ditch paving project with an increase of $171,025 for a total contract price of $2,136,522, first reading.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Hammond, a second by Councilwoman Ross, is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? Counsel, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance limiting financial contributions to non-governmental organizations and establishing procedures for accountability and repeal all ordinances in conflict herewith, first reading.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hammond, a second by Councilman Cliff Smith, is there any public comment? Good afternoon, yes, sir, just to state your name and address for the record and then sign in on the sheet.
Nathan Hicks, 411 Dunmoreland Circle, Shreveport, Louisiana. While I realize I'm not a Bossier resident, I am the current acting chair of the Bossier Arts Council, and I'm simply asking the council for clarification. I've read the proposed ordinance, and I'm unclear as to whether or not our organization would qualify as an NGO in its current iteration.
Ms. Nottingham? And then, if you would, while you're at the mic, just kind of give a brief overview of the entire ordinance?
Um, as they are recognized, there is an ordinance, I think went back to 1981, that recognizes them, the Arts Council and the city's partnership, so they would be, they would not be subject to that limitation of the $20,000. We also have a cooperative endeavor agreement with them. So the ordinance would limit contributions to nonprofit entities to a maximum of $20,000 annually, and then they would have a process, we would have a CEA in place, and it would also require, the CEA would only be for three years. So then we would, it would give the council an opportunity to revisit those, renew, or, or if they chose not to, if there was another organization that came forward. But then it also limits to half a percent of the general fund expenditures. And this way, the previous ordinances had a dollar amount set, and so as, you know, prices increased and, and requests increased over the years, that, we broke that several times, and so we felt like this was a better way to keep it in check with the general fund expenditures. And so this was just, it was a joint effort, and so I appreciate Phyllis' help and President Smith, and we had a lot of conversations, Mayor Chandler and I, as we were going through the budget process and evaluating some of these. And so this would be effective January 2026, so that would be, we would definitely send notice out to any of the organizations that we currently do provide funding to, so they would be aware of the new process and can then apply.
And then, and too, we also put in here the requirement for them to report-
Yes.
How they're spending the money and how it actually is benefiting Bossier City residents, because that's going to be a requirement through the application process, that they have to show where the money's going and how it's being used to benefit our citizens.
And Ms. Nottingham and I researched it, and that's a state law, that it has to, yeah.
So, all in all, it cleans up a lot of older ordinances and kind of gives us good direction going forward. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you, council, thank you, Ms. Nottingham.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
We always appreciate your continued assistance and support.
Absolutely, thank you. Is there any other public comment? Any comment from the council? Uh, Mr. Cochran?
Yeah, I really didn't have a comment until this gentleman just got up. As far as the donations of the money, I do, I think that we do need to get the reports, and I do believe we just got a report from you guys. And we hadn't received a report, or I hadn't received a report from any other entity. The only concerning thing that I saw in that report is that there were 19 events that were held in the last quarter. I believe about 85% of those events were one called Bossier Bike Night. And I'm not sure if the Bossier Arts Council has done anything with that organization or group at all. If you'd like to comment on that, you're more than welcome.
Good afternoon, sir, please state your name and address and sign in on the sheet for us.
Good afternoon, council, Mayor Jeremy Hefner, 4220 Riley Lane, Apartment F-102, Shreveport, Louisiana. I am the venue coordinator of the Bossier Arts Council in the East Bank Plaza and currently interim director. When it comes to the plaza, so the Bossier Bike Night is an independent event, that's not associated with us. And a previous director likely submitted that report. So I would actually like to see that report myself. The number of events that we do in the plaza are based on our tiny staff of four, putting free programming in that plaza, which is generally, it's a public park, it's a venue that can be rented as well. But, for example, coming up, well, last weekend we had our zombie walk. Coming up, we've got a food truck festival, spicy food truck tasting challenge. We have Vet Fest, which is an annual event we do every year with Got Your Six and Barksdale. We have our holiday market, we're planning our Mardi Gras market. Certain times of the year are very busy, and other parts of the year are kind of slow, especially in the summertime. And although there is an interest in renting the space from, from some individuals that reach out to us, sometimes they don't find themselves able to pay for the off-duty security officers or provide the insurance or other things that are associated with the rental process. Whereas we, of course, we have our insurance with the city, we manage the plaza, and we are freely able to put programming out there. But in addition to the plaza, we've also got our theater, and we've got our two art galleries, and we have our annex building, and we're constantly doing events, to the point that we can't constantly put events in the plaza every single week, because it takes a lot to market an event, to create an event, to put an idea out there, to coordinate all of these things. Now, my goal is definitely to put more programming out there, and if there's any ideas that you have, I would love to hear it. And if there's opportunity for partnership, any events that you would like to see done in that plaza, please reach out to me. I would love to hear that. Doors wide open for communication, pleasure meeting you all. This position that I'm in is kind of new, but if you have any additional questions, please let me know.
I do.
Yes, sir.
One sec, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I, and, and again, I'm, I'm not picking on you guys, you guys just happen to be here, but what I would encourage us to do, and I'm a strong proponent of capping this, I believe that if you want to do something donation-wise, you can do that with your own money, when we're working with the citizens' money, I believe that we have to be very, very responsible for it. I'd say that we need to have extreme overview of what does come in report-wise, and to make sure that they are using the taxpayers' money. We are taking money from people and picking and choosing where they go. And I would encourage us as the council to- And I would encourage us as the council to review that, um, wholeheartedly. Take those reports seriously. Because when I saw that report, I won't lie to you, I was a little disheartened um, that 85% of the events were done, nothing from the, the Arts Council. With that said, um, I just think we really need to take a strong look at where every single dollar that we give, if we're going to give, if we're going to be in the business of giving, then we need reports and they need to be sound and we need to be aware of all of them. I, I digress.
I agree. And, and I don't think he's, I don't think he's picking on the Arts Council. We, we, I think even this year, we have budgeted about 1.9 million that's going to outside entities that isn't Bossier City-related. There may be other government entities or, or NGOs, but, um, traditionally, we haven't got good reporting. Um, and so, and that's, uh, consistent not just with the Arts Council, with most other government entities. And going forward, we're going to be real strict on these reports. If you have nothing to report, you have nothing to report. But, um, but there needs to be at least some value given back to our citizens, so, um...
If there's a specific criteria that you want to discuss for us to follow through for, for stricter guidelines and reporting, I'm all for it.
Sure.
Um, anything you guys want to know at all, just reach out to us and we'll provide it.
Sure.
And if there's something that isn't happening, that you would like to see happen, please let me know that too and we'll make it happen.
Yeah, absolutely. I think whenever you, uh, you get your new leadership fully in place, uh, a conversation between you guys and, and the city would be very beneficial so we can have a good relationship. Fantastic. Continue our good relationship going forward.
Absolutely. Uh, Councilman Hammond, did you say you had two?
Yes. Yeah, I, I do. Yeah, so just something you said, um, raised some questions. So this weekend, y'all are having a food truck festival?
Uh, not this weekend, on November 1st.
Okay. The, the only question I have about that, are people going to be paying?
Uh, just for the food.
For the food?
Yeah. Most of the events that we provide in the plaza are free and open to the public. Uh, so the zombie walk we just had, the only criteria for that, and it wasn't enforced, but it was to bring canned goods for Louisiana Food Bank because it was a charity fundraiser for them. We also had donations for the Shriners Hospital and things like that.
Yeah, all that stuff is fantastic. I appreciate that. Just a couple of questions about food trucks. I, I know we have, we have a very hard ordinance on the book about food trucks. Have y'all obtained all of your permits and everything for that?
Every truck that we put out in the plaza, uh, I, so I coordinate with the tax office for all of our events.
Right with who?
With the tax office.
Okay.
And, uh, so they get a list of every truck and every vendor we have for every single market. Um, and so we make sure that those things are in place. And we don't book food trucks that don't have their licenses with the city or their permits with the city. Uh, we avoid that at all costs. So, uh, yeah, we're previously worked in a restaurant and I understand there are some guidelines.
Well, I mean, just, you know, having a food truck event down there when we've got other businesses, restaurants that are there day in, day out, striving to stay afloat, have businesses. And then here we are, we have a food truck event two door, or right next door to them.
So before we had done this, this is about our fourth one that we've done in a couple of years. Um, we've spoken with local businesses in, in the district. We, we keep a partnership with them on many of the events that we do and they're all for it. Uh, sometimes they have a hard time getting butts and seats because there's too many butts already in seats. There are people lined out the door to the point that they're having to tell people, "I'm sorry, you've got a two-hour wait, three-hour wait." This alleviates some of the stress from the restaurants. So having other options, plus, uh, some of the staff and some of those businesses have told me that they appreciate other opportunities of other food to eat while they're down there because they eat the same thing every day. Um, but I do understand the concern. Uh, this is something that we have communicated with the businesses in the district, though.
Okay.
Let me just very quickly clarify two things. Um, Bossier Arts Council and its mission and where it's located and the building that it's located in, which is a historic building, creates the necessary federal requirements for that to be considered an arts and count, uh, cultural district, which opens up some federal funding. And we have always considered, at least during my tenure as council chair, that our position there is not only to provide an arts and entertainment display, but to act as a force multiplier to that area. We like to think, or we strive to do event programming that will not only enrich the area but the businesses around us. It's a symbiotic relationship. If they do well, we do well, and then Bossier does well. And that's truly how we view our mission. And I promise the reporting will be very clean.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other comments from the council?
Well, I was going to tell you, I went down there last year and talked to all the owners. They love what they're doing down there. I visit with every restaurant owner, Mr. Fancy and all, they said they're doing a great job. Doing a great job. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. All right. Is there anything else? All right, Ms. Ross, go ahead. No, no, I was getting ready to call for the vote, so if you want to say something, go ahead.
Okay, uh, President, uh, Smith, I was just going to ask, is there anything in that ordinance that, that the city of Bossier make a one-time donation for any nonprofit organization that's trying to establish and do something for citizens for Shreveport and Bossier?
So this, this ordinance would establish that if anybody wants funding from the city of Bossier, that they would submit their application. So it goes into effect in January, so it's, it won't go into effect immediately. It goes in effect in January for next year's budget cycle. If you want, if you operate an NGO, um, or other nonprofit and you want funding from the city, you would have to submit an application no later than September 1st. Uh, and that application is, uh, going to have all the requirements that you're going to have to say that you meet. Um, it'll then go to approval by Mayor Chandler, uh, and then approval by the city council. Um, and of course, they're going to, we're going to have to have to active CEA between us and that, uh, that organization. Um, they're going to have to show the benefit that they're going to give to the Bossier City residents. Um, and then ultimately, if it makes it in the budget, it makes it in the budget. So I think to answer your question, yes, if someone applies.
Yeah, so that starts in 2026. What do you have established for now, before 2026? Is there anything?
There's, there's really no...
If you make a one-time donation?
There's...
There's nothing?
There's really no guidelines. No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. All right. Is there any other comments, questions? All right, council, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Mr. Chris Smith, did yours pop up?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution adopting the city of Bossier City's current investment policy in accordance with Louisiana Revise Statute 33:2955D and Section 16.02J of the Bossier City Charter. First and final reading.
So move. Second.
Motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Cliff Smith. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? All right, council, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a foreman in water distribution for public utilities and backfilling any vacancy this may create. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Maggio. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? Council, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries.
Uh, Ms. McGraw, do you want to skip past the budget real quick and do the item at the end and then do all the budget at one time?
Sure.
Okay, let's do that. So we're going to skip to item number 38.
Introduce an ordinance to amend ordinance 84 of 2025 to appropriate $60,000 from general fund fund balance to retain a professional services agreement with the firm Carr, Riggs &amp; Ingram to perform the tax reduction audit. First reading.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilwoman Ross. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? Uh, council, I will just say that, um, since we passed this ordinance back in July, uh, myself and Councilman Gerard, uh, met with many audit, uh, accounting firms, uh, got an idea of, uh, of what the scope of work would look like, uh, many of which, you know, said that they didn't have the time. Several of them did, um, and so ultimately, we ended with this firm. Uh, we feel real good about the, uh, quality of work that we're going to get from them uh, and the scope that they're going to do. So, uh, uh, then we finally came up with a dollar figure to attach to it because the original ordinance, uh, did not have that. So that's what this is, is appropriating the money. And, uh, I know I said it at the committee meeting a couple of weeks ago, but Ms. Williamson, thank you so much for working with them. I know they needed some preliminary documents, so thank you for your cooperation in helping them. And they said they miss you an awful lot, so... All right, council, is there any other comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries. All the way back up. Introduce an ordinance to adopt the general fund budget for 2026.
Uh, Madam Clerk, I'd like to make a motion that we combine items 10 through 37.
Second.
So motion by Councilman Chris Smith, second by Councilman Cliff Smith. Uh, is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? All right, council?
Yes, President.
Yes, ma'am.
Smith, there is a, uh, comment. I'm, I'm still on this part-time, getting that, is it not time to do it?
Hold that, yes, uh, we're just, this is just a vote to combine them and then we'll take amendments. So, yeah, give us just a second.
Okay.
All right, um, so this is a motion just to combine all of the budget items into one vote. So, all right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries.
All right.
Introduce an ordinance to adopt the 2026 general fund and capital fund budgets.
So move. Second.
All right, motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Cliff Smith. Is there, uh, Ms. Ross, we'll start with you.
What did you want to do?
We'll, we'll do public comment after, after you do your amendments. That's fine.
Okay. Uh, uh, my comment is, uh, again, we've been talking, I've been talking about the part-time employees, uh, getting, uh, some type of a raise because in 2024, there was a, um, amendment by Mr. Montgomery Jr. And I'm going to read per minutes what was, uh, taken on November the 13th, I think it was. It says that, it says, uh, by Mr. Montgomery Jr., motion to amend all 2025 budgets that have a salary account and them to take out the administrated proposal for raises and replace with a $500 per month raise for all employees in the city of Bossier. And I wouldn't keep talking about this, but there's something about that word "all." It was not specifically said, "all full-time employees." If it had have said "all full-time employees," I wouldn't have any issue with it. But there's just something about that word "all." And I'm not saying give all the part-time staff a $500 increase, but Amanda had, uh, put in the budget for 2026, uh, 2% increase that would give the budget, uh, $10,669 more into the budget for 2026. She had already calculated to take 93, $9,350 from the general fund, 133 from the MPC, 970 from the civic center, and 216 from the sanitation, uh, department. And I am just asking this council if they would vote to amend what, uh, Amanda had already put in progress for 2026 and it was taken out and it was not even documented in the minutes of the last meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago. So that is my take on that.
So are you making a motion to add?
I'm making a motion to add.
2%?
2%.
To part-time employees?
For the part-time employees. I think there's only, uh, 38, was it? I can't remember. I had it written down.
There's maybe 28?
There are 28 approved positions and 17 are filled. And the reason it was not in the budget today, there, there was not a formal amendment made and so that was why it's not in today. And so that was what we were going through.
Okay.
With making the amendments opposing.
Uh, so Councilwoman Ross is making a motion to do a 2% raise to all part-time employees on top of the... Right, this, and for the record, I'm thinking, this does not include the part-time city councilmen. This is just, and women, this is just the part-time city employees. Right, right. So I just wanted to make sure that's clear because there's a camera pointing at me right now.
Yeah, no, not it.
Uh, um, all right, so that's your motion.
Yes, sir.
Okay, does Ms. Ross have a second for her motion?
Um, I, I've got some questions. You want me to go ahead and second it first?
Yeah, all right, we got a second. We got a second by Councilman Cochran. All right. Now that amendment's open for discussion.
Okay, um, a, as y'all know, I was, I was totally against giving a pay raise for part-time employees. Um, talking with Ms. Ross and we've, we've done some investigating and digging through the budget. Um, I, I guess if you, if you want to come, come up, Ms. Nottingham, um, I've just, I've got a couple of questions that we need to get cleared up.
Okay.
Um, looking at the budget from '24 to '25 for the city attorney's office, um, everyone in that office got a pay increase.
Mm-hmm.
There was five employees. All five got a pay increase. Mr. Ray has always said that he is a part-time employee of the city of Bossier. It's on record 999,000 times that he says he is on record as a part-time employee, but he got a pay increase.
He, he does work part-time. This assistant city attorney position is classified, um, in the charter. Uh, it, it's not a part-time position. I guess it's not mandated that it is a part-time position, if that makes sense.